Call this meeting to order. We're meeting here today to discuss with NDC improvements to our downtown parking system. We do have a presentation that will be given to council and to the public, but I think we'll start off by going around the table introducing each other. Pat Rogan, the council president of Scranton. We'll go over to Wayne.
Wayne Evans, Scranton City Council.
Senator Perry, City Council.
Dave Trippasani, National Development Council.
Dave Holzoni, City Business Minister.
Jessica Hatt, Scranton City Solicitor.
Bud Sweet, National Development Council.
Well, we thank you for coming in and we're looking forward to your presentation. So the floor is yours and council, I'm sure we will have a number of questions following the presentation, but the floor is yours.
Great, thanks very much. I like the informal nature of this, I really appreciate that. Even though I have a formal presentation here, please feel free to ask questions as we go along. This is really a very important, obviously very important aspect of business for the city and National Development Council and want to make sure you get all the information you need today as we talk through this. I put together a few slides here to help you understand where we are with the parking system update, both what we've accomplished to date and what we hope to accomplish going forward and what the next steps are. But before I get into the formal updates, I just wanted to make a couple comments on the connection between parking and economic development. Sometimes that narrative gets lost. Parking in the downtown is often very different for a visitor to downtown if you're not coming downtown all day. It's just a lot, it's a harder experience and so it's often a negative connotation attached to parking. NDC works in communities all across the country, small and large, and we see, are seeing, a revitalization of a lot of small community downtowns in different parts of the country. A lot of that is residential in nature, whether that be the young person wanting to walk to work or the empty nester who wants to be near entertainment, restaurants and shops. Downtowns are often the lifeblood of the community, the business center of the community, the government center of the community. It's where, it's where community engagement happens. In Scranton, you have many festivals downtown and the theme is always the same. The downtowns are compact, they're dense, they're walkable, there's a store character, there's green space, and there's a street wall. When I say a street wall, I mean very few spaces or gaps that are developed as surface parking to support a particular building, for example. And so downtowns were developed, are very dense, there's a lot of real estate in downtown and having structured parking to support that real estate, to encourage investment in that real estate is really critically important because without it, you would have that, you would experience that disinvestment. You would experience buildings going dark because there isn't enough parking. You'd see buildings demolished because the values would diminish. And so I guess I just wanted to put a little shot out there for parking in downtown neighborhoods. And Scranton has really very solid assets. This is the parking system. You'll see here, five garages plus the Steamtown Mall. The Electric City Garage is owned by the Steamtown owner. The other four garages, we leased the whole system. And from the beginning, we've said that it's very important to have one system operated consistently that had consistent rates, that was operated safely with consistent operating standards so that the public had a consistent experience when they came down to visit parking. They knew what to expect. And as you can see, if you look at the center, if you look at the center here, there's not a lot of gaps in the center area of the downtown core in and around the green space. And that's very, that's very important. I think that the reason for that is you have structured parking that accommodates that real estate. So very important to try to, try to keep that and maintain that. In the way of some updates, we closed this transaction in August of 2016. We really looked at this at the time as a startup. We'd made many changes since we started up, obviously new staffing, new operating procedures and beyond the general cleaning, painting, cleaning up of the graffiti. There really are four major components to what we feel we've accomplished to date that were substantial. The installation of the new LED lighting system, all the garages have new lighting. That saved the system about $40,000 in utility costs. The Linden Street elevator took a lot longer than we would have liked and would have expected. Once we got into that, it was a much larger job, much more complicated than we originally anticipated. But the light, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. We expect that to be completed this summer. Knowing that we were going to be without an elevator and the main elevator, we switched and switched some energies over to the Mulberry Street Garage, modernized it, upgraded the security and safety. And so there is an elevator in the Linden Street Garage, it just happens to be, you know, around the corner. So that was really a major, a major aspect of what we, what we got started on. The revenue control equipment, that's the gates that you see, that's the equipment that you see and the ticket machines that you see in all of the garages. It's state of the art. In order to make that work effectively, we had to upgrade the Wi-Fi capability for the area. And then the fourth thing was security cameras, signage upgrades. The fourth important thing, and this was really encouraging, was successfully renewed leases in the first four commercial spaces. When we took over, all the leases were month to month. It took us probably about a year to build, to build some confidence, to build some trust. Are you for real? Is this going to happen? But we successfully negotiated lease extensions for all of the tenants except one and that one tenant has made some upgrades and spent some money. So we think we'll eventually get that tenant on a, on a lease. It's the Bob Dickert's Restaurant on the corner. All the other, all the other spaces are under longer term leases from one to five years with extensions. We secured a new tenant in the Medallion Street Garage, or in the Medallion Garage, which is the investment firm you see there. And we are working currently with a national company who's interested in coming downtown. We've negotiated a letter of interest with them. They're not ready to go public with that, but they've expressed interest in opening a new, a new branch downtown. In the Linden Garage, yep, in Linden. And that, so that's, that's very encouraging to me. Again, these folks were, they could have opted out of their leases. They all were happy with their locations, they were skeptical, they were a little concerned that this was going to work out, but at the end of the day, they all wanted to stay where they were, which means businesses, business is okay. So here's some financial highlights from our first year. As I mentioned, we really viewed this as a startup operation. We meet with the bondholders on a quarterly basis. They recognize this was a startup, they recognize this was going to be a transition. We made a lot of changes when we, when we first, first took over. We instituted a new rate structure. We moved from 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM for enforcement on street. We know we had no, no equipment in the mall. We have 2,000 spaces in the mall, folks were able to park there literally for free, maybe not use the mall, go do business downtown. We weren't able to operate or understand how the system was going to, going to operate until we were able to get that control equipment in place. So there was some uncertainty. So we put together some projections, those projections were done with, you know, with ABM and Desmond and it was based on limited historical data because of the changes that we put in place and the fact that the mall didn't have, did not have equipment operating in it. We did however, well, knowing there was going to be some uncertainty, we created a stabilization account which was, which was dedicated for the very event that we experienced in 2017. Cash was tight, revenues didn't come in as we expected and we used our stabilization account to meet our budget. And even though cash was tighter early on, we are obviously and have been current on all of our, all of our obligations with the bondholders. What 2017 did for us is allowed us to understand how the system was going to operate going forward. Now even though we didn't have equipment yet in the mall, we were able to, the ABM had staff there, we were able to count cars, we had a good idea of what revenue, additional revenue we might generate if, once, once, once the equipment went live. ABM had a full year under its belt for understanding what the cost of the operations were going to be. So we based 2018's budget on 2017 actuals. That was very, obviously very helpful for us. And currently, we are on budget through, through May of this year. The equipment in the mall has been operational since March, so it's been two months. We're seeing, we're, we think we're seeing really what we expect to see going forward now that folks can't just pull into the mall and park without paying. Again, being able to control, have one system with consistent operation was really key and we're finally, we're finally there. I think the negotiations with the mall owner took a lot longer than we would have anticipated, negotiating the terms of the validation equipment, but that's in place now, we're working out the bugs. And so I think we're very confident that what we're seeing now is going to be similar, you know, going forward.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
When I was, you know, looking at the whole parking situation, one of the things that I looked at, there was an argument for many times in March 2018, and there was a disagreement between Mr. Bassley and NDC. So can you just explain as we've been met and I was...
Yeah, I think it's...
He said, all people could park for three hours, you're saying three hours.
That's right. It's three hours. I think that he misunderstood, he's been telling his tenants free, which, which if you go to the mall and you use the mall, you, you will park for free. So the idea was to make sure that the ABM customer service team was able to ask a series of questions and make sure that whoever was parking in that mall was actually, was actually using the mall. And so that's actually what's happening now. So it was just a misunderstanding. So going from the operations side to the capital side, oh, well, here's some pictures of the equipment. You have the gates, you have the revenue control equipment or the ticket machines at the entrances in the lobbies. We did some concrete work, we did some painting, striping, the signage is new. So I really think they look, they look pretty decent. This is, this is Medallion. So onto the capital program. When the transaction was closed in 2016, we knew that there was going to be improvements that needed to be made. The estimates of those improvements were 5.8 million, but they hadn't been bid. They were, they were just that, they were, they were estimates. So dollars were set aside at the closing in order to be able to cover those costs. 1.8 million was set aside from the bonds at closing. 3.3 million of the $4 million that was set aside at the SPA escrow fund was set aside at closing with, with the SPA. And the $4 million PennDOT grant. So you have a total of 91, 9.1 million dollars available for, for parking infrastructure. Now that really is divided between three, three key aspects. The Linden Garage is really considered that phase one. Completion this summer, cost of that are a million, two six. You don't expect more in the way of cost, we just got a change order today, I think it's a small one. But that, that, that number should not change that much. Again, that was a lot more complicated than what we thought. We had to get the elevator shafts ready to accept the new cabs and we, and the dollars that came from the insurance company were just not nearly enough to be able to cover that cost. Then there's the structural repairs and preventative maintenance, that's the major program that we anticipated from the start. 5.8 million dollars, I'll go through that in a little more detail in a minute. And then what's really most exciting to us is being able to get rid of these orange bags that, I think we would all be happy to get rid of the orange bags, to have a new kiosk system to replace the current obsolete meter system that's, that's currently in place. Here's the, here's the major capital program. This is what was anticipated, you know, from the start. The original plan was to take off the top two floors of the Linden Garage, undertake structural repairs and preventative maintenance of all the garages. We bid that program out last year, that came in $2 million, about $2 million higher than that number you see there. We realized we couldn't do it all, we worked with the city team, we decided that it was in the best interest to try to get everything done was to not take the two floors of Linden off, leave them in place for now. There's nothing wrong with them, they're structurally sound. We need to, you know, put some ceiling on the top level, but it was fine if they just stayed and we decided what to do with them later. What we had to do was demolish the helix. The helix is structurally unsound, that's the major part of this program. We need to take down top two, top two rungs of that helix. The upper floors are still accessible, there's other ways to get to the upper floors, not through the helix, was actually the exit ramp. The other ramp was the entrance ramp, it could accommodate two cars. So the key is to take down the two floors of the helix. Installation of a vehicle barrier system in Casey, that's a code-related item so that cars, as they're going around the ramp, can safely do that without going off the ramp. Steel, concrete repairs for all garages and the, and the preventative maintenance, the joint repair, the waterproofing and sealing so that the garages don't further deteriorate and cost more to repair later. Electrical, mechanical, plumbing, fire upgrades that haven't been done in a long time, really needed to be modernized. New doors, door frames, if you walked in Linden, there either isn't a door there, the door's rusted out or it doesn't close or open, not, not good for safety reasons. So, so all of those items outside of the bottom two are included in the five point, or are, are part of the 5.8 million dollars. The bids for those items came in at 4.9. We have bids, we received them in February, we received an extension from contractors to the end of this month to hold those prices. There'll be slight increases, the major contractor feels steel prices are going to go up, so we're expecting some slight increases there. But 4.9 of the 5.8 is for that part of the program. Now, part of that financing is going to come from the PennDOT grant. Well, the 4.9 million dollars, because it's a matching grant, will not allow us to utilize all of the PennDOT grant that we received. In order to maximize the PennDOT grant, we need a 5.8 million dollar program. So if we do nothing else and we take the bids that we received and we undertake the repairs, we will be leaving $650,000 on the table and not be able to utilize that because we don't have enough of a code, a program to be able to meet the match requirements of the state, of the state grant.
Now, did you know two years ago that it had to be a match?
Yes, yes. And actually, the dollars that were set aside were anticipated to be the match. The 1.8 million dollar bond proceeds that were set aside in the capital fund, that was anticipated to be the match for the PennDOT grant. Now, we had to divert some of those monies to take care of the Linden elevator, which makes us short for the match, plus we have a smaller program overall, which, which means that if we don't go back to the state and expand the scope, which is what we hope to do, then we'll just be leaving that money on the table. So the difference between the 5.8 and the 4.9 is dollars to match the PennDOT grant. Now, we'll have to go back to them. What we have here are estimates. The priorities in working with the city team are an upgrade of the commercial retail spaces, waste signage and then further upgrades of the garages. Now, we know we can't do everything, but we know we don't want to leave any money on the table with state grants. So we'll have to work out that scope. There's 35,000 square feet of commercial space, some of it's in decent shape. The Linden Garage, the mechanical systems in there are original, the single pane windows on the storefronts are original. There's just another example here. This is a great location, this is the Connell Garage, this space is, is a wood lease, but if you look into that space, and I understand that dollars weren't available at the time, there's no floor, no electric, no plumbing, it just doesn't have anything. So for a tenant to come in and lease that space, it's going to be extremely expensive for them to come in and, and upgrade that space, not only to meet their own needs, but just to do the basics to get a vanilla finish. So, so that's the kind of example that we're, that we're talking about. And then, so that's, so that's the capital program that was always anticipated as part of, as part of the, the dollars that were set aside from, from the grant. And I, what's really exciting again to me is the new on-street system. I think you, you know and probably have used the system that currently is there. It's an obsolete system. If some meters just take coins, some smart meters that take mobile pay or credit cards, the meters break often, they, they take 30 to 60 days to get repaired. We've been reluctant to invest money in new meters for the same obsolete technology because the break even would be, on some of these meters, the break even would be so long, it just wouldn't be worth it, knowing that the right way to go would just be invest in a whole new system. So communities all over the country are going with, with, with the kiosk system, it takes one kiosk and it, and it applies to a number of spaces. So you wouldn't have a key, you wouldn't have a meter at every single space, you would have a central location, person would go pay and it's license plate based, which is easier for enforcement, it would save on operating expenses and, now some people wouldn't like this, but you wouldn't be able to piggyback. So once you put your license plate in, if you bought an hour and you stayed 30 minutes, the next person that came in would start over. So right now, if somebody pays for two hours and they stayed for an hour, someone else can pull in their spot and use it for that rest of that time. So it really creates a much more efficient, efficient system.
How does that work with handicapped spaces?
You mean the, the height, for the height?
Yeah. I was thinking like if I was a handicapped person...
There are, there are handicap kiosks that for, yeah, that are, that are at the proper height. Yep. So the kiosk system, and this system hasn't been chosen yet, it hasn't been designed yet. I mean, there's really great examples out there and obviously we'll be working with the city team to decide on what, you know, what the aspects of the system are. It'll be state of the art, touchscreen capable, it'll, multiple payment options, easy to use, there'll be a support network to maintain it. This is just an example of one, this may or may not be what it looks like. I'm sure you've seen these. Here's just another example, this one's got a solar, a solar array on top. And this is, I'd like to play this because this is a, this is Pittsburgh, a video of just to show folks how easy this is to, really how easy this is to use. And it's just a minute long if you... Let me see if I could put this volume up here. Okay, we're not getting any... Who's our right key guy? Not getting a, not getting a picture though. Sorry about that. Yeah, I, um, maybe I can come back, maybe I can come back to that because it's on the desktop. But it is a minute and I would like to show it to you. I really think that these are easy to use and, and working with ABM, obviously there'll be a program to educate the public so that everyone can understand how to use these so that they can understand really how easy, how easy they are.
Am I correct to presume most cities similar size have this type of system?
That's correct.
I can tell you, I live in Manhattan, it's a small neighborhood, a couple of years ago they went to a kiosk system, they had the old used, they had a kind of a bell on the road we have here and it's, it's almost paper itself already.
And this system to me seems to make more sense as a lot of people carry less cash, you don't have a bag of quarters on you...
That's correct.
...to pay with your credit card or you can use cash, whatever's more convenient.
Right. Currently, you have a system where if you have a young person who doesn't carry cash, they, they couldn't park or probably will not park in a cash only spot. So, and then a person, maybe a elderly person who maybe has cash but doesn't have a credit card or a smartphone, will, won't be able to park in, in those spots. So this sort of solves that by having one consistent system that, you know, accept multiple forms of payment.
I think also that it's going to be an opportunity to increase revenue for on-screen parking and also decrease the cost.
That's correct. The operator expenses will be saved.
The labor will be more than...
That's correct.
Well, now for this, that wasn't just a little, is it more economical when it comes to types of wage you can pay for spaces? It collects data, it can tell you what frequency that parking space is turning over. You know, what are the higher use space versus lesser use spaces? So it gives you, gives you real data to make decision on.
That's right. That's, that's an important point. I mean, having the revenue control equipment in the garages, having a smart system like this allows us to collect data so we can make better decisions on where to make, where to make the investments.
Let me touch out a past sore point. If this mechanism happens to go down for whatever reason, I think, what you can do with the parking area, you can either, I'm powerful like what happened with the broken meters, put a park in that area or is the parking system going to be allowed to run all the businesses if a machine breaks?
If the machine breaks and is not usable, what would be the policy?
I mean, we'll, we'll have something similar procedure I do up there, but I mean, those are pretty reliable, it's not like, you don't really break that often. But when they do, we'll have, we'll have that procedure to make sure that we're still...
I'm just saying private business, it has to put on business, even if there's a 24-hour turnaround, you know, a whole grand park and in there six, seven days, you know, that's reasonable business not to have park in front of you for places 24 hours. I understand, you know, the significance, it's not in that long time, but that, that's part of our life, I think, to wear down.
Yeah, I think we'll have a procedure that to make sure that businesses don't go down.
Can we, can we, can we guys have the record too that you allow parking while that machine's down?
Is that normally what we do now? Either if the machine's down, people can still park there? You don't shut the spot off, do you?
We work with the local business to make sure that they're not impacted by that.
Yeah, I think that we'll, of course, we'll work with the local business to make sure that folks are, their business isn't being impacted.
Right, so when the kiosk goes down, you may be shutting down most of the whole lot.
Right.
And...
I agree, I agree, I agree. No question, we'll have to work that out.
If it has to be lost, if it's lost...
That's correct. We obviously don't want to hurt the merchants.
That's something that kind of fell from the cracks last time, and I just want to make sure going forward, that you, you know, can act as to...
Sure.
...that we have something that's going to make it right to, you know, not let it...
We'll make sure there's policies in place to, to address it. Here's the, here's how the numbers break out. The, the bond proceeds, that's, that's the $1,008 from the original closing and $2.75 and change from the insurance proceeds from the elevator claim in Linden. The $4 million PennDOT grant, the $1,005 from the SPA escrow funds dedicated to structural repairs, the $1,804 of the SPA escrow fund dedicated to the new on-street system. The, where the dollars would be spent, we, we, we know pretty closely what that Linden elevator job is going to end up at, maybe a little bit higher than that with the change order. The construction is the $5,008, which is the $4,009 we have bids for now, plus upgrades to commercial spaces and other, other aspects and working that out with PennDOT and the city team. And then there's a contingency of 426,000 and don't expect there won't be change orders, that's a 7%, a little over 7% of the 5.8, I think that's a fair number, expecting some changes. And then the on-street kiosk system, a $1,804. So a total investment of $9,300,000 in a, in a new system, which is, which is really, really would make it state of the art.
Who did the original estimates?
Desmond? Desmond.
And then who did like the new estimates, you know, or not?
Desmond, yep. Desmond did the original estimates, now they were, they were a couple of years old when they did them a little while back, so, so the costs were, you mean when to take the top two floors of Linden off?
Right.
Yeah, that was Desmond. Desmond re-scoped it, they did the new estimates and our new, our new pricing came in really close to where the new estimates were, when we decided to leave the two floors of Linden in place.
And I think most of what the public is going to ask about, the general public, is how the parking system affects them downtown and obviously, the kiosk system is a big change from the old fashioned carrier on a bag of quarters system.
Sure.
But I think it's one that, that will definitely be a positive improvement once residents and business owners get used to them. I, I think we've all have used those systems in other towns.
Yep.
Our ECTV did say there's, they're having a hard time picking up some of the questions. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over for questions to Councilman Evans to start, he's our liaison for parking and then we'll pass the microphone down to, to my other colleagues. So we'll pass the mic to you, Councilman Evans.
Are you guys, are you ready to move on to your presentation?
Sure, yes.
Okay. One of the things that we've seen downtown, at the growth sector downtown is the downtown apartment dwellers. It's exploding and it's going to continue to grow over the next decade. So one of the things I've been discussing with ABM and NDC for the last year is how do we get a reduced downtown residential rate for parking garages because I think that's important for a couple of different reasons. One is, and it's kind of odd that this is sort of an unintended consequence of a very active real estate market and a very active downtown bar/restaurant trade. And what's happening is they're intersecting for the first time probably in a decade. So you have downtown residents are parking on the street after hours after 5:00, which is fine, but they're taking up spaces possibly for some of the people that want to come downtown and, and go to restaurants and bars. So one of the solutions we always have felt all along is to give some sort of reduced rate to the downtown residential families and people that are living downtown and that would alleviate some of that.
Right.
We certainly don't want to dissuade anybody from coming downtown, we don't want to dissuade people from living downtown as well. But the $90 per month fee has not driven enough activity, I feel, into the garages. I mean, the garages are basically at a certain rate during the day and after 5:00, it probably drops down to a, a lower level.
Right.
There's plenty of room in the garages for people to park at night and most of the workers that live downtown, where people live downtown go to work and then... the workers that live downtown, or people that live downtown go to work in the morning and they leave.
Right.
So, uh, to me, it's a win-win to get those cars off the street and into the garages. Uh, what have you done? We've talked about this, but I haven't seen any proposals from NDC or ABM about reducing the rate for that sector of the, uh, population.
We, 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 we understand that, and we think that there's an opportunity there right now, and I'll turn it over to Bud. We are currently gathering information so that we can make an educated decision. We know we have residential parkers now parking in their garages, what we'll need to do is get a handle on what the market is, what the demand is, and then make sure that we're not violating any bond covenants, because in order to be able to offer a special rate to the general public, we would need to make sure that we're, we're, we're utilizing spaces, utilizing the garages where they're most underutilized. So, we might have to say, for example, have a specialized residential rate, but you'll need to park in this garage on this floor, for example, and that would allow us to do that. And that may still work just fine, but we'll have, balancing those things will be key. Bud can give us an up-to-the-minute.
Certainly. Uh, this is an important, as, as, as the councilman knows, to, to other stakeholders in the downtown. Scranton tomorrow has, has talked about this for quite some time, and the developers and the existing landlords who are looking at other expansion and renovation projects, they're estimating they're going to be putting a number of units on in the downtown as far as residences over the next five years. So, what we need to do is have an informed, to make an informed decision, we have to have a database. So, to that end, we've been working with the institute that does a lot of surveying, data collection throughout the northeastern Pennsylvania, and to design a survey instrument to be distributed by the current landlords and developers of, of the major residential units downtown and, and mixed-use development, to gather information as to people's existing parking habits, and if they were given an opportunity to have a reduced rate, we're not going to quantify anything, what would be their preference? Would they prefer to pay less and park on a less accessible floor, or would they be willing to pay more and park, uh, at a more accessible space? Once we have that information, then we can get a size of the population that's existing, we can use that as a surrogate variable, and to apply it to the units that are coming downtown, then we can talk, we can talk about numbers in terms of what that monthly rate would be.
And I think that we're getting a handle on the number of new potential units that are coming online, you know, we know how many building permits were being pulled, and the developers that are sit on the Scranton tomorrow board have been really very good about sharing information and willing to help. They think this is, this is obviously in their best interest as well, so...
Well, so far, the strategy so far hasn't moved the needle one car, so we, we need to do better, and we've had this discussion for quite a while, so, uh, I was really hopeful that by the time this legislation got to us, it was something that could have been resolved, and, and it hasn't been, so, um, I'm not happy about that, I'll be perfectly honest with you.
Okay, noted.
I think we needed to, to move this thing to a, a point where we're past the study, I think that the data is up, been there for a while, uh, it's, it's not that complicated. You can serve me, me, I'm a surveyor one, and I'm telling you right now, you lower the price, people will go in the garage.
Okay.
It's that simple. It's not that complicated. And the more people that you get in the garage, even at a lesser rate, the more revenue you make, because you're, you'd rather have a seventy-five percent capacity garage than a thirty, thirty-five percent capacity garage, even at a lower rate. Uh, so, I think, we don't want to lose the momentum of, of what's happening downtown because people do not...
Right.
Want to park in the garage because they've already told you, based on the numbers, the rate is too high...
Right.
For them to move into the garage. So, that's, that's my take on that.
Okay.
Uh, so, I won't dwell on it too much, but I'm somewhat disappointed that we haven't gotten, brought in this issue to a conclusion in the last year.
Okay.
Uh, I know you're collecting the data, and that's ongoing, but I think it's time to, you know what, and get off the pot.
Okay.
Um, secondly, um, you mentioned security in the garages, uh, can you specify exactly what you've done on the security front? Because, uh, I personally have seen an issue with homeless people in the, in the garages that are on a regular basis, and, uh, is there, are there cameras in the garage? 'Cause I haven't seen them, so I don't know if they're playing or going in the garages or...
I'll, I'll just give that one over to Vito.
There's security cameras in the garage, and there's security service.
There is a security, I never, I've never seen anybody in the weekends.
Yeah, well, we are at security service for the weekend.
Are, and, and are they, are they undercover? 'Cause I've never seen anybody. Are they, are they undercover? 'Cause I've never seen anybody. No?
What firm do you use, what firm?
Uh, I think it's corporate speech, I confirm, I think that's who we use.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll have to, we'll have to vet that a little bit, because I haven't, I haven't seen anybody, and I'm not sure where the, where the cameras are.
Note, um, I don't know what the hours are, or, or...
Yeah, I don't have to get back in the hours, but I'm pretty sure it's, uh, first or second shift on the weekends, so it's pretty much, um, I have to get the exact hours off.
Okay. If you're experiencing a problem in the, in the garages...
Okay, it's not an everyday problem, but it's something, certainly, that's, that's apparent at times, sometimes more than others.
Right, and I think that once we...
And I understand why, but...
Yep, I agree. I think once we, we, we do, we do the upgrade, as, as I mentioned in Linden especially, the doors, there isn't even doors on a lot of the garages, where if we were able to make some improvements by upgrading the security cameras, putting garage doors on some of the, some of the entryways, we can close these garages off at night and make sure there's no access.
Yeah.
Can't currently do that.
Well, and I, I will testify to the fact that, that there have certainly been major improvements to the garages and safety, clinging to this visibility as far as the lights are concerned, you know, and I'm not going to ever dispute that.
Right.
I don't mean to get on anybody's case here, but, um, in the kiosk issue, I will say this, that I'm a proponent of that, I think it's a great idea. I think we have to remember that's our asset.
Right.
The on-street parking is the city of Scranton's asset, so you're improving our asset for the long term.
Right.
Uh, I think that once, uh, I, I still believe, maybe prior to the kiosk implementation, that the study that we talked about should be done, a full on-street study for pedestrians, for walkability, for traffic lanes, for one-way streets, all of that could be done in conjunction with the planned kiosk program, because I think if we do that, we, we do it once, we get it right. Uh, I think there's opportunities probably for dozens, if not more, of additional parking spots on-street downtown, that should increase revenue, which will allow at some point in time for all of this to start paying dividends back to the city of Scranton, 'cause I think that at the end of the day, that's what we want as well.
Okay.
So, uh, that's all I have for the time being, so, I'll pass it on.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, you answered my question about the kiosk, and the unlikely event that that goes down, that parking will be allowed in front of those businesses, 'cause that was a very source point when that, when we had broken meters and, uh, there was just no parking available outside there. Uh, Mr. Evans touched on, uh, security, I also had a security question. I know we spoke, um, last year, uh, it was probably about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, uh, there was talks about installing touchpoints for patrols in the garages for like a wanted point, and that way, there is, you could keep track of the flow of patrolmen going from floor to floor, spot to spot. Uh, has that been implemented yet?
Uh, it has not.
Is, is that still in the plans to implement, uh, a touchpoint wand system where we could actually track and follow, uh, patrols on where they are and when they've been there?
We, we're considering, we're reviewing some options right now, we're considering.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I wasn't aware, but I know that Vito is. We'll, we'll look at the cost and we'll look at...
And I, you know, I understand that's, obviously, that's an expense...
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it's, you know, it's, if it controls our people to make sure...
It controls, right.
We're doing a more efficient job patrolling the areas, that probably eliminated a lot of things Mr. Evans has noticed.
I liked that idea, I didn't know that existed. We should talk about that for sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, just the first thing, um, can we just check through the legislation? I just want to make sure I know exactly what we're voting on, so, could someone just summarize, you know, what the ask is here, what are you asking us to vote on? I mean, I think I have a good idea, but if you can just check through that, that would be helpful.
So, at this point... Hi, Bill. So, um, essentially, what the legislation does is adopt a second amendment to the lease concession agreement for both facilities and, uh, the meters. Um, and what this would do is authorize the release of three-point-three million dollars. Well, it's actually the total four million dollars in the escrow account that's being held, um, that was the result of the parking transaction, the initial lease concession agreements. Um, six hundred and ninety-six dollars would be coming back to the city upon execution of this agreement. Five hundred was provided for already in the city's operating budget, the remaining one ninety-six we would hold to hopefully use this, for the study that Councilman Evans referenced, um, an overarching transportation, walkability and traffic study in the downtown that would work part and parcel with the creation of a business improvement district with Scranton tomorrow and NRN. Um, so, that would absolutely be a bonus to the city that I think, um, is, is definitely worth pursuing. Um, in addition, there is an additional three-point-three million dollars that's contemplated. One-point-five of that would be pegged for the match to the Pendot grant, um, you can see up in the, the final slide, and the one-point-eight million remaining would be used for the expediting of the on-street upgrade system for the kiosks.
Okay, thank you. Um, in the legislation on page four, section two, it says Desmond, uh, will provide periodic updates of the progress of capital improvement projects to the city. Can counsel be provided or copied on that information as well, when the periodic updates are given? 'Cause that would be helpful.
I don't see why not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, page four, number four, it says the, uh, and I think you touched on this a little bit, but it says the plan is to inform stakeholders of parking improvements. Can you just talk a little bit about how you're going to go about doing this and what you've done maybe in other cities when you had this, you know, all of these new developments and improvements?
Well, we want to, we want to obviously keep the lines, we obviously want to keep the lines of communication open. Um, we currently go to the Scranton tomorrow board meetings on a regular basis, um, the plan would be to, you know, regular periodic meetings with the, with the city team to keep them updated, obviously.
Is that on? Okay. Yeah, the, the idea would be, and we'll have to develop this communications plan, but the idea would be to have regular periodic meetings with the city team to keep them updated on the progress. Um, we want to also keep the public involved, um, we will, we'll, we'll expect to have periodic meetings through Scranton tomorrow, which I think is the best vehicle, where we can keep them updated as well. Maybe that's a quarterly meeting, maybe that's a monthly meeting, where we invite the public to answer, to ask any questions, and we'll be available to them, so...
Okay, all right, thank you. You touched on this a little bit too, but I, I, I didn't hear you, or maybe I missed this, how many empty commercial spaces are there currently in the garages?
There's thirty-four thousand square feet of commercial space, there's the old, um, Bud, help me with the names.
There's the old...
The old Molly Branigan's.
The old Coliseum.
The old Coliseum space.
And space...
In Connel. Yep.
Okay, and you said earlier you're actively trying to fill those.
Correct. Well, we, we, we've been working with a, with a broker, where the difficulty has been the condition that the spaces are in. The Coliseum space is really, it really needs a lot of work, and, uh, the space in Connel is really, doesn't have, doesn't have really any, any finishes whatsoever. I think the Molly Branigan space is probably the best space, that's, that's the space that's been looked at the most, um, so, that, but it's a big space, so you got to find the right user.
Right. Um, the parking that's offered at the mall garages, um, you're collecting the revenue there, obviously, according to the deal. Now, initially, it was said two years ago that it would possibly generate one-point-seven dol, uh, one-point-seven million dollars of net benefit over the twenty-two-and-a-half year lease. Based on what you've seen, and, and maybe you can't answer this, but based on what you've seen over the last few years, do you think that still holds up, and is that an accurate projection?
That's just too hard to say. I mean, we really need to, we do really need more data to try to understand what the overall benefits of that, of that, that equipment in the mall is going to be. I mean, it's been since March, um, we know folks were parking in there and not really using the mall. I think it's just going to, now that we have the equipment in, we can now track that data, we're, we're already seeing increases in on-street, we're also in, seeing increases in transient parkers in some of the other garages, so we know people are moving around, but I think it's going to take us another few months to really understand the, the, the total net effect of that.
Okay, and do you know roughly how much revenue you have received from the, the mall parking?
How much revenue were you receiving from the mall market? Uh, no, I, I mean, we, we will be tracking that, but again, it's only been three months.
Okay, right.
So, um, it, it won't be a lot, I could tell you, because what, what the idea was to make sure that if you're a mall visitor, you park in the mall, and you use the mall, and you'll park for free up to the three hours. So, we're not expecting to gain revenue from the mall, what we were hoping to do is make sure that the folks who are parking in the mall were going to park someplace else where they were doing business downtown.
Right.
So, we expect to increase revenue in the other places in the system, but not necessarily get revenue from folks who park in the mall.
Okay, got it. Um, what maintenance and, uh, capital expenditures has Steamtown Three Hundred been responsible for?
Steamtown is responsible, uh, CDPS operates, operates the garages, so, we're responsible for sweeping, Vito, you'll have to help me on this.
Power sweeping.
Power sweeping in the two garages, um, the mall owner is responsible for the capital needs of both Steamtown and Electric City.
And what has been, it, it said, I remember two years ago, he said Electric City garage would be fully renovated and repaired. Um, do you know roughly how much money has been spent and what has been done there?
I know that the mall owner has put LED lights in, and I know that they've, um, uh, done two things, they're, they're looking to secure financing, 'cause we've had that conversation, and they have hired an engineer to start the design work. Um, I'm not aware of any physical, um, capital improvements that were, have been made to date.
Okay, and I ask that because in the documentation that we received two years ago, it said Steamtown Three Hundred would, uh, spend two-point-two-five million, which would be forty-five percent, the other fifty-five coming from the, uh, parking authority, of immediate capital expenditure cost, so that's why I'm curious is to, if they have spent any of that yet?
No.
No, okay. Um, has the, uh, parking authority spent the two-point-eight-five million toward immediate capex cost?
No.
Okay. Um, you're, it said, uh, you're entitled to a hundred percent of all revenue derived from the parking offered at Electric City. Do you have an idea of how much revenue you've collected from Electric City?
Uh, I, I couldn't tell you without looking at the numbers. We tracked that, we have revenue control equipment in that garage, but without really looking at the individual reports, I couldn't break it out for you, but I don't believe, it's the least utilized garage at the moment, um, that, that I, that I could tell you. There's not a lot of monthlies there, and there's not a lot of transients in that.
Do you have an idea of, I mean, are you guys in communications? I'm, I'm expecting yes, with Mr. Basaliga and when he's going to spend the, the money?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, we've, we've asked him for a schedule, we received, uh, a schedule a few months back, we need to get an updated schedule, um, from him, but, yeah, absolutely, we are keeping in contact, and he's, he's obligated, under his agreement, to make those improvements by date certain, and I know currently, he's behind, and we, we need to continue to have those conversations.
And then, the other thing with, uh, Steamtown Three Hundred, it said in the agreement that they're entitled to up to sixty free spaces to use for future tenants of apartments owned by Steamtown Three Hundred. Do you know if that's taken place yet? And if so, when would that take place?
I don't know if they're utilizing any of those spaces in Electric City. I think we're setting them aside, but I don't think that they're utilizing any of them yet.
Okay. Okay. The, uh, there was a plan for an additional 150 meters and I can't remember. Has, have they been at it yet downtown?
They have not. We're currently working with the city team to determine the best locations of that. We wanted to really look at the time zone spots, where the best places for the meters are. Um, before we actually start to place meters. We have replaced some new meters, but we, we need to actually do some more due diligence in order to get new meters on the street. And now that we're working with, assuming we go forward with a kiosk system, that obviously will change where and how many.
Okay. Um, then when I was looking over the agreement, it said that the improvements to the Linden Street parking garage, the Casey parking garage uh, should be completed within three years of the closing, which I think would make it August of 2019, unless an extension of the, uh, the timeline is approved by the city. Do you feel that you're on track to, uh, finish those items before that deadline?
I, I think if we're, if we are able to, um, secure the, the assistance, I think that we, it's a 12-month process according to our engineer. So yes.
Okay. And then in the beginning of the presentation, you said obviously that, um, you know, things were a little tight when you first took over budget-wise. So in one of the documents that I was looking at regarding the flow of funds, it said, uh, ABM collects the revenue associated with the parking system. Uh, they pay the operating expenses of this, of the system. They remit payments to the bond trustee to pay the senior debt service. They will remit payments to the bond trustee to pay the subordinate debt service. Then they'll utilize available funds to perform, uh, ongoing garage maintenance. If subordinate debt is still outstanding, additional funds may be used to pay off subordinate debt earlier than scheduled. Is, is that all taking place and can you comment on that at all?
Yes. I mean, that, what, these bond transactions tend to be pretty complicated and there's a very specific waterfall, it's called, with where the, where the, where the dollars go. So you're absolutely correct. The dollars come in, ABM pays operating expenses, the monies go to the trustee and they're directed by the bond documents to fund accounts to pay obligations, whether that's a debt payment, a reserve payment for debt service reserve or capital reserve. So there's a very specific set, sequence of where those dollars go.
Okay.
And we follow that very closely with our finance team.
Okay, thank you. Last thing, and I talked to Mr. Bolzoni a little bit about this. I just want to make sure I get it straight. So two years ago, uh, according to the agreement, when, if we received, at that time, we did not receive the multimodal agreement yet and the amount of $4 million. So, uh, the agreement said that it will result in a dollar-for-dollar increase in upfront proceeds to the city when and if the grant is awarded. Um, so obviously now that, that money's not coming back to the city, we're giving that to NDC, correct? Or can you just explain that again so that I understand that correctly?
I, I think the dollars are going to the system. I mean, they're
To the system, right.
Yeah. I mean, so, I mean, they're going to us to improve the system.
They're being reinvested back into the system.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But I just want to make sure. So two years ago, uh, I think we're under the impression that that money would come back to the city.
Two years ago, there was a budget allocation for 2 million and that was prior to, uh, formalizing any of the construction estimates. So we weren't sure necessarily what the city's, uh, the city's participation level might be in that project. So we put that in based on what we expected at the time to be a $1 release for every dollar that was used on the grant. Now, you know, that was factored in, of course, the, uh, the match that was associated with the grants, so the 32 cent match on each 68 cent dollar, of each dollar is expended. So that's what our expectation was at the time. It was, it was somewhat preliminary. Then as we came into the 2018 budget, we had a better understanding of what those capital costs would be and recognize that that dollar amount that we likely would expect to get back would be less than what was included in the, you know, 2017 budget. So we modified it accordingly. And it turned out that based on some of these numbers that are presented this evening, it's probably fairly accurate in what we should expect to get back based on this capital allocation. Correct, right. Right. And keep in mind, there was a better understanding going into this budget year as to what those capital requirements would be. So we expected there was going to be a participation level and just tried to estimate based on what that participation level was. Um, and knowing what the match requirements were of the grant, how much can we, how much would we actually expect to receive once the project had gotten underway? Now, a, a lot of the mechanics of it had been worked out through some of the discussions between the, uh, the city and our partners on the parking side. So even when we were creating that budget allocation, I wasn't necessarily sure at what point it would come back. But we thought it was at least important to include that allocation in because we did expect that there was, was going to be a return to the city of some of those dollars.
And then can you just clarify the, the $696,000 that the city's giving, uh, getting back from the escrowed funds? Uh, $500,000 of that was already budgeted. So that just goes into that account of the general fund?
Correct.
And then what does that get used for? Anything specific or?
Well, I, I expected that those dollars would have had a capital assignment since that's what the original borrowing is for. Now, that's relatively easy within our budget to um, allocate those dollars out upon receipt to various capital projects. Uh, but generally going into the general fund, it then becomes part of that operating budget and can be used for any purpose. But I wanted to stay within the capital confines to be able to use it for something, even though it's not earmarked specifically for a single capital project. But as you're aware and looking at the budget, there are a lot of capital needs and we expended uh, dollars for a number of different capital initiatives and, and will to you to do so this budget year.
Okay. My last question. Um, on page five, section B of the legislation, it says the city, uh, may share the cost of legal fees. Uh, I wasn't quite sure what that was pertaining to. Can you just explain that?
So in negotiating this contract, obviously, um, we had the assistance of Buchanan and Gersoll, who were part of the first transaction. Um, they're being paid for by the parking authority. Um, but we did not want to undertake sole responsibility or fees for the transaction. So anything that needed to be reviewed by counsel on NDC's part or on ABM's is up to them. That's not something that the city would contemplate footing the bill for. Um, and so that's what that is in reference to. Additionally, should we need to have anything amended with respect to the multimodal grant? Uh, we would expect that each party would obviously, um, share in their own costs for counsel that they may wish to consult on the deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have, uh, just two quick questions. Um, so did the initial estimate that was done two years ago on, on, for the garage, the capital improvement project cover the same scope of work as the current estimate? So that increase is just an increase in costs?
Yes. The original cost for, uh, assuming the two-floor, I think, that's the ask.
Okay. And, uh, do you know how you will determine where to place kiosks?
Um, I, I, I think we'll have to, I think we'll have to bring on a, a team, but I think we'll have to just decide how many spaces and everyone kiosk will cover. I think there's a lot of experience out there.
So, so when that happens, that there'll be one on each side of the street, I guess, for, for one ways or?
Typically, one little block face or they're, they're typically one on a block face, um, equidistant from each corner. But again, the specific placement will come out in the study.
Okay.
But there'll be a lot less infrastructure than just having meters lined up along the range of the street.
Yeah.
Probably that's, that, that would be the most logical configuration. But again, depending on the geography and the street pattern or, or usage, right?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just thinking of, you know, the 300 block in North Washington. It's sort of a little bit of a hill. So if you have a senior, you know, park, you know, say down towards the end of the street and then they have to walk up to the middle of the block to. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our, our guests for coming in today and giving this presentation. Um, we did run a little bit late. So counsel will take a, uh, two-minute break and then we'll resume with our regular meeting. Thank you.